Welcome to the City Council Meeting of May 19, 2020. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda? I'm sorry? I do have some amendments. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Councilman Guines. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would you please read the substitutions?
Hello. To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5I, the resolution only concerning a tri-party agreement for downtown housing. We're also substituting item 5Z, resolution only concerning the bid of SCI Incorporated.
Thank you, Lucy. I've got a motion to accept the agenda as amended by Councilman Lawrence. Do I have a second? Seconded by Nathan Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So bring us to the presentation of the agenda. Mr. Mayor, your report.
I think it's, you know, what I think, it's, we think that we're reopening. I think we're all going to run into a lot of hopes and plans to adjust this, what's this reopening versus being, I think, everybody's had to play the negative reports, what we've done with the rest of so far, we just been, um, trying to add it, backing it up, and to, and I think we're, uh, reopening the law taking, I think, uh, hope to continue, uh, tomorrow will be a big day, kind of look at how we're facing this part of the game and tourism, so it's, uh, for hope, we can, uh, just watch, vigilant, and I think, factor of necessarily every day about where we are with the 14-day running total, and I think, and very flat, there was, uh, that's been sending numbers made by the, the health department, that guy's kind of angry, and a message one day, uh, about, uh, 10 percent. When the protest, I mean, protest is 100 percent of people don't get, don't help. Everybody knew with the mask and with the, this is, it's, uh, very important, very important that we're going to take a step backwards, and, uh, so I think, uh, everybody, for the most part, yeah, yeah, but, uh, critical, a couple of months here, and, but again, it's an opportunity, it's a buying opportunity, it's a, uh, time, because, okay, we had, uh, one of the interesting did this, was, uh, in New York Times, I think, uh, something together, and, uh, the hint was, for gamers, which is an alternative method for gaming, okay, and, and instead of us paying, so it's been, uh, for, uh, worldwide, need to do it right. So, you know, I'm encouraged, I think he should be encouraged, we've got some challenges, our big challenge is, is, uh, opportunities to get, uh, some revenue, uh, recovering money, you know, I'll be in jazz tomorrow, uh, and, uh, making sure that MML and some of those organizations are getting that point across, we got, uh, I remember something just about, we had Paul and the same folks, and now Paul and the folks are really, okay, so, uh, so be passionate, and, and what we need to say is, uh, what's needed here, to the state needs, so, uh, we look at our game, you know, I, we have the state, we go directly, state is twice as much as we get, so, uh, that's my spiel, but, uh, Nathan, did I say, do I need to say anything else?
I'd like to say something if you'd let me. You've got quite a stack of resolutions today, and to save some questions later on, let me just point out that at your place is a copy of an email that you got earlier in the week, just so that you had a hard copy. It's the season that we prepare for submission of grants, and generally, what that means is that we, for a new project, we set up a capital project number. We put a small amount of money in that capital project in order to start the design effort or the project effort, and then we frequently, then, the third resolution is the establishment of a contract with a, an architectural engineering firm to get the project set up for us. We're shooting for June, when both Thailand's and Gomez's projects are going to be due, and so, for each of those projects, there's three separate resolutions, so we dumping them all on you today, but I think if you see that the sheet that I, I made for you, is, you sort of can see the big picture of where we're heading, and we're really setting up for a really good grant season here. We know that there's, we were told that there's $40 million in Gomez's money that's going to be evolved, that's going to be, that we're going to be able to go after, and of course, we've got the normal run of Thailand's projects. I spoke to Representative Kevin Felcher just yesterday, and he, he was reading back to me the scores on some of our projects, and some of them are scoring quite well, so I think we should be in good shape, but I just wanted to let you know about that before we, you wondered why there were quite so many resolutions on the same project, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is that, Mr. Mayor, I think there are some questions. Mr. Lawrence?
The gaming is opening up tomorrow, when it was at 10:00 a.m. Are they open 24 hours a day?
I think to 10:00. I know the restaurants said for 10:00, I don't know the, for, fact. Thursday at 8:00 a.m., but I don't know if it's a 24 or not, 24 might.
I don't know. I'll find out, sir.
I know the restaurants are supposed to close at 10:00 within.
I know all the restaurants do that, that's what a couple of restaurants said, if they're going to stay open 24 hours, can a restaurant stay open later? That's what was the question. I told them I'd find out at the meeting.
Get that answer.
Get you an answer.
But you see, you don't know. They don't say, I read something in the writer, but they really give a time, they just said they opened it, and they limited in a lot of stuff, just like everybody else, but that was the main question, because, you know, some of the restaurants live off the casino that, you know, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning business, when people leave from work and stuff like that, so they were just wondering if they was open 24/7. Did we set the time or the state set the time on a restaurant?
I think the gaming commission sets the time.
No, no, I'm talking about the restaurants. No, they, they close at 10:00.
I, I do not know, I, I know that there's a time limit on anything that we're opening or, or what the governor's executive order says, but I think he's, the whole executive order is leaving it next week, I believe, but 10:00 o'clock was, was what the restaurant figure was, uh, time was.
And they had another lady, they live downtown Biloxi, and they had their go-kart made a street legal, but they won't give them a tag for it, and they were just wondering if, you know, Ocean Springs, other little towns do that with the go-karts, right up and down, hot app, not, not hot app, I mean, not Highway 90, if it uses downtown, do we have to pass something like that?
Yeah, we do, and right, and that's, that's an issue, and I think the chief can follow up on what the issues we've had with the, some of the things that are legal on Highway 90, uh, that we classify as a go-kart or motorcycle, so, uh, you know, we're rolling the dice, there's been, I think, uh, some accidents in and around those places, and if you want to comment on the, the whole go-kart thing.
Yes, we, we did quite a bit of research to try to determine what was legal and what's not legal, uh, and those little carts they have down there are legal. It's, it's defined as an automobile because you get in it. If you get on it, it's defined as a motorcycle. All those are under 50 cc, so they, they don't have to have an endorsement on their license, they can do it with a regular driver's license. Golf carts are not legal anywhere in the state on a U.S. highway, but Ocean Springs and Diamond Head both passed an ordinance allowing it, allowing them to be used on the back streets without having a license tag on them.
That's, so we'd have to do that.
We'd have to pass an ordinance.
Set up some ordinance to do that, to make it where they could use Howard Avenue, I mean, that'd be pretty neat, I don't want anybody, I passed a few of them little red things, you have to have guts to get in that thing, drive down Highway 90, I mean, that thing is little.
Oh, yeah.
Under three wheels and that, but that's, man, I.
They're a concern.
Mount Mercury run right over them, never even see them. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Can I ask you one question? Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, when we dealt with the go-kart issue in my ward in Sunkist, I thought we had the Department of Transportation or golf carts, yeah, so, which falls in line with, with what I guess Diamond Head, Ocean Springs did, but didn't we, weren't we told that we couldn't do that, that they had, they had the say over what goes on the road, and it required them to have a windshield and blinkers and rearview mirrors?
Yeah, several years ago, Diamond Head was able to, to get them legalized there, and they, they did some, they did something with the state to do that, but then the state, from my understanding, repealed any of that, and it was at that time that we had made the request here, and the state said, no, we're not, we're not going to do that anymore. So they actually were able to, my understanding was to use them on the roadway in Diamond Head, because the state allowed them, but the state, if there was repeal process or whatever they did, they, they repealed it. So the only, the only thing we can find now is that if you're going to use them, you know, you have to get a city ordinance, and they would not be able to be used on a state highway.
Hello? I talked to Peter about this recently, because I have several people in my area that had asked, because they'd gotten pulled over for riding them in neighborhoods, and a lot of the neighborhoods in Wool Market are one way in, one way out, basically, and they'd been pulled over, but I think in Ocean Springs, the ordinance that they passed is they have to be street legal, you know, I don't know what the state's regulation is, is, they have to have turn signals, headlights, brake lights, all that kind of stuff, mirrors, and.
That's right, all that is in, is in the city ordinance, the state is not going to, not going to put a tag on them regardless.
Correct.
If they're, if they're street legal.
And they are allowed to cross 90, but they're not allowed to drive on 90, so if they're coming from the north side to the south side of 90, they can cross it, but they can't drive on it. But I would like to see us pass, I think it's foolish to have them on, you know, even some of these little things they have on 90, but for the neighborhoods, I would like to see us pass an ordinance, put together an ordinance under your direction, you know, what, what would be safer not to put something together for the city, for neighborhoods, because there are a lot of neighborhoods that it's not unsafe to have them in.
The, the, the number one thing that, that the police department would ask from a, a public safety point of view would be that it had to be a licensed driver.
Correct.
Because most of the complaints we get are.
Are for children.
On kids, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that completely.
The mayor, Chief, you said they, they cannot get a tag, or the state won't issue them a tag?
The state, state will not issue a, a tag, a license plate for the vehicle. Even if it's street legal, they will not issue a license plate for it.
Is there some reason for that?
I guess they just don't want them on the roadway, I don't know, but that is the standing law.
I can see the neighbors, I can see some kids, I mean, something like that, I think, we need to look at, maybe pass something like that, but I'm like you, I don't think kids ought to be driving them, they have to have a driver's license, and stuff, you know, you don't want no 12-year-old kid running around with them, but I think it's something we need to look at. We'll put our president, our president there in charge of that.
There you go.
You can handle that, can't you?
Thank you, George.
You're welcome. I'll rent one of those little red ones for y'all to take a ride.
Felix isn't in the room. Ms. Newman?
Yes. I would like to suggest that we don't make it a requirement for businesses to wear masks and gloves and jot down everybody's information, and rather strongly encourage it, in that way, because I think we're opening the can of worms of lawsuits, and that is something we don't want to have happen with our businesses, because we're already going through enough, and is there a pre-plan if the numbers skyrocket because the casinos open? Do we have a pre-plan of what we're going to go have happen?
You know, we, we don't, we're not aware of the, the Gaming Operators Association, as well as the Gaming Authority, but certainly, contact tracing and some of these other things are going to be looked at, you know, where this is coming from, and, and, you know, whether it's community-generated, you know, positives or whatever. You know, we're just going to pay attention to that 17-day running total, and if it, if it bumps, you know, and, and after five or six days, it, it goes and it becomes a hotspot, you know, we, we will, I guess, raise the flags with not only, you know, CDC and the Health Department, but also with the Gaming Commission. Now, if everybody's taking the steps necessary, if a hotspot breaks out of one of the gaming operators, you know, it wouldn't be our intention, you know, if there's enough of the pre-planning, you know, and contact tracing, we don't want to, you know, knock all eight of those businesses out of place, when it makes sense to, to isolate and remove or correct those conditions, but we'll be in contact with Larry Gregory and those folks about if, if and when that happens. I'm sure that there is a contingency, but I don't know what it is.
Does anybody else have any questions for the administration, or can we go right into council reports? Do you have, in addition to what you were asking earlier?
That was it, that's pretty much, as council report do.
Thank you. Councilman Newman, anything further? As a council report?
Nothing.
Thank you, masked man. Councilman Glavin?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to just congratulate the class of 2020 for their unorthodox graduation in these, these trying times that we have, and, and all the different classes and everything that have been graduating under this COVID-19 situation. Also, shout out to Biloxi Youth Baseball, they began practicing, the kids are out there having a marvelous time, learning, they couldn't wait to kind of get, get together, and there's hand sanitizers enough to go around for probably 15 baseball teams out there, and they're enjoying kind of using that up during the practices. I think the games are going to begin soon, I've heard some dates, like the first of June, and it'll be an abbreviated season if we're able to put all that together. If not, they're certainly been enjoying America's pastime. Shout out to the traffic committee, issued a request for the Taylor's Oak subdivision, jumped on it, and the signs are up, and the, all the people are, I'm getting a lot of good response from that, so hopefully that'll be a good deterrent. I know that isn't the only deterrent, but it's a step in the, in the right direction. And then I have a couple of, if the streetlights are out, is Mississippi Power replacing them with the new?
LEDs.
LEDs, is that the process? So, if they have a complaint, we just turn it in, and then y'all take it from there? Or do, I mean, what's the process?
Well, you know, we've got such a mixture of lights in the city, it's best if the Public Works gets called direct, a service order, and so, so we can investigate. Some cases, the lights belong to us, in some cases, they belong to Mississippi Power, in some cases, they belong to us, but are maintained, maintained by Mississippi Power, so, so it kind of depends on where you are in the city, and obviously, if it's across the bay, it's the co-op, so, it would, it's best, I think, if people just use our, our system of service calls, is to call into the, our, our call number at, at Public Works and just indicate a, a light is out, so we can go check it out, see who owns the light.
Okay. Thank you. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Glavin. Councilman Guines?
I don't have no report.
Thank you. Councilman Barrett?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, recent, or a while back, we had a lady come in talking about the speeding on Hudson Cron Road, and the mayor and I went out there, and I got another call this week, and they said since the, the quarantine that it's worsened, and so, if we can just look into that, see if there's anything we can do right there in that area, just south of Waste Management in that curve where they have the subdivision, I think it's called Crystal Lake subdivision.
It's a chicane, for sure, it, you know, I was wondering too, whether the, the garbage traffic, you know, those big trucks that hit there and that really scare people, you know, when that traffic is, is, you know, increased, you know, with this, this time off.
It's possible.
But, yeah, no, that's, that's an issue, and we talked a little bit about, you know, putting some barriers or, or something that would.
Rumble strips or something, just right there in those curves.
When that came up before, I know that the chief had people to go out there. You want to say anything about what, what we did? Are we doing some more enforcement there, or?
Yeah, it's that curve just south of the subdivision.
Yeah, Emerald Lakes.
That run in between there, I think, is where the issue is.
Entrances, yeah.
If we can, just whatever we can do to, to help out there, and then, secondly, we had come up with a deal with the county and passed a resolution on redoing Snug Harbor, I think we were going to pay for the blacktop, they were going to do the work themselves. Do you know where we're at on that?
They haven't done the work.
Okay, so I'll follow up with the county then on that. And then a couple of observations, I, this weekend, I went out of town for the first time in a couple of months, and took my jet skis over to Orange Beach and sat down and ate for the first time, and first observation that, as I was going in, is they had signs on the interstate saying beaches and restaurants open for business, and I don't know if that's something that their Department of Transportation was doing, but with people passing through, I think that people are going to drive before they fly going, and so, if they're coming through here, it might be a good idea to do something like that for Biloxi, to try to, to let people know we are open for business that might not know otherwise, and then, they also had signs on the interstate and everywhere about making sure you sell, fill out your census, and I know that we have those signs as well, and I know that we need to get as many people to fill them out as possible, so just a, a couple of observations while I was over there that we might be able to use with that sign, those digital signs.
Of our 14,000, I believe, the number is 54%?
That's where we are today, we got a long way to go.
Of the 14,000 places where people live, you know, addresses, 54% of them, but everyone counts, I mean, you know, we need to express that to, to the BTB world, that, you know, it just takes online very few minutes, and, and by mail too, but it's important to count everybody.
Last week, we provided to the census people in Atlanta your digital images of your faces, and they are creating a, a release for each one of you to release to your, whatever, whatever you use to, to communicate with your ward, and the people in your ward, you're going to be releasing this picture of yourself with this message about census. We'll have those to you this next week.
And then one other observation, and I don't know if it's something that we could do, I know that whenever we have a storm coming in, we always have to remove boards from our, if we're going to have high tides from our, some of our piers to let the water flow through, they had these deals, and I know Orange Beach has tons of tourism and tons of tax dollars, to where it's some type of hard plastic or something that is open to where the water can flow through, like grates almost at their piers, and every pier that's out there has that, anything that's public, and so, it might be something we could look into to save labor after the fact, whenever we have high tides or, you know, hurricanes come in, so, just a few observations.
Got some pictures, you got, you take some?
I have some, I don't have them actually, I didn't have my phone, but my wife took some for me, so I'll get them. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett. I don't have anything in my report other than, clearly, I'm not as cool as you are, Mr. Mayor, I have no idea what your acronym BTB means. BTB.
Biloxi TV.
BTB, I know what that one means, I, I, all right, maybe I'm as cool as you. That'll take us to citizens' comments, we have 45 minutes total, three minutes per person, if you could, respect the, lots of people in the room, and keep it to three minutes. Anyone that wants to speak, please come up to the table, state your name and your address, sign in for me. Do I have anybody on the left-hand side of the room, my left-hand side of the room that would like to speak? Mr. Kohler, if you would, please state your name and sign in for me.
My name is Thomas D. Kohler, and my address is 244 Acre Street, and I'm here today because of this resolution, and I just found out about it yesterday, and I guess it hadn't been presented before planning and zoning, for some reason, and this is mobile home property, and I feel like this resolution is defeating the code that's been put in place to restrict one trailer per lot, and I do not feel like the owners are being treated equally out there, there's been a lot of activity with trailers being replaced, which I don't believe is the intent of the new code, if the lots had more than one trailer on them, when that, something happens to that trailer, then I, I was led to believe it's restricted to one trailer by the new code, and I'm one of the original owners out there, I bought in 1968, and I've seen, you know, different changes, different things happen out there, but it really hasn't developed like what it could be, I, I think. Some people have bought homes out there, I don't think what's happening is fair to these people that have built brick homes and put money into their lots, I've thought about building there, it's a nice location, it's handy, I'm, I'm retired Air Force, it was always handy to the base, so, like I said, I'd like a report of the, the trailers that have been replaced and moved in there in, in recent months, like the last year and a half, and what the intent of the city is with Baker Street, and I've been told that I bought five more lots here several years ago, and in those lots, there's a, a parcel that was somehow deeded and sold, and the city tells me it's an illegal lot, yet it's tying me up, it's putting restrictions on the property I bought, and nothing's being done about that, and here this resolution is wanting to subdivide more lots out there, and I think somewhere down the road, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the future is for Baker Street, but it's just going to make more problems, and all this means to me is I've got to put up with more people, the, the speed limit out there is like 15 miles an hour, nobody's observing that, nobody's helping, there's loud music, and, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's an income place, I guess, for certain people.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kohler.
And I'd like to, you know, find out who I can talk to more about this.
Is there anybody else on my left-hand side of the room that care to speak? Anybody on the right-hand side that would care to speak? Anyone in the back? There being none, we will move to the policy agenda, and that'll give us Resolution A.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for property identified as 265 Baker Street.
Thank you, Lucy. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So moved by Nathan Barrett, do I have a second?
Move second.
Seconded by George Lawrence. Discussion, Mr. Barrett.
Can you explain exactly what's, what's going on here?
Yes, sir, what this is, is there, there are lots in the Baker Street Trailer Park, they're all zoned RMH, this one is an oversized lot where they're dividing it into two lots, they meet the requirements for dividing it into two lots, so it comes to the council for approval.
You have the floor, I'll save my questions, that's all, that's all I want to do. Mr. Lawrence, your second.
What's the size of the one lot, did you convert it to two?
They're both over 5,000 square feet, and they're both 40 feet wide, which is what's required by RMH zoning.
So, they're following all the rules and regulations?
Yes, sir, they are. Okay, and let me just answer one other question, too, the, the question about replacing a mobile home, an existing mobile home, the council made changes several years ago, there were some situations up in Wool Market where we had some mobile homes that were falling down, and Mr. Fayard made a recommendation that if they were taking out the one that was falling down and replacing it with a newer model in better condition, that they should be allowed to do that, so there's a section in the ordinance that does provide for replacing a dilapidated mobile home with a newer one.
So they have to replace it with a new trailer?
Yeah, newer, yes, sir, it doesn't have to be brand new, but it does have to show that it's newer than the one that was, that was in there.
I know they had some on Baker Street that were a little bit in bad shape.
Yes, sir.
But is this an empty lot, or is this a trailer on it?
This one has, it's an oversized lot, it's double the size of what's required, it has a mobile home on one side of it, and what they're doing is they're dividing it, and they're going to put another one on the other side, but each one will be on an individual lot.
So it'll be two separate lots?
Yes, sir.
And one trail on each one of them?
That's correct.
And it'd have the room to make it two trails, that it can do two trails on one lot?
You can't put two trailers on one lot, but you, you put one on each individual lot, once these are, once this one is created.
So they're dividing the parcel?
That's right.
In two lots, one trailer per lot, that?
Yes.
Now, are they dividing one parcel, or is this?
It's one parcel right now, they're dividing it into two, but the two that they're dividing it into, both of those new lots will meet the minimum size requirements for RMH zoning, which is residential manufactured home.
Okay, and why did this have to come before the council, why not the planning commission?
Because this is what's called a minor subdivision, because of the few number of lots that are involved. And it's, it's given discretion to the Director of Community Development that if both of the lots comply, if they both meet the minimum size requirements, then the only thing that's required is for me to assure that they do meet the minimum size requirement and present it to the council, because it's only two lots involved.
Okay. So every- There's a couple of questions, Jerry. We had a lot of code enforcement issues in Baker Street. We had hoses running around with water. We had extension cords of power. Is everything out there set up electrically? Water and sewer? Is everything out there legally set up for these trailers to be there?
Okay.
And over a while, it was pretty bad.
Okay. We try to make sure that everything out there is compliant. Anytime we get a report that there's an extension cord running, that's a code violation, we go out and write it up. Anytime we see that there's a problem with sewer, we write it up. We just handle it through code enforcement like we do anything else.
So everything now is set up with the water and sewer?
To my, to my knowledge, yes, sir. I'm not aware. Now, are there issues out there that are not pretty? You know, they might not be attractive, but that might not necessarily mean it's a code violation. We have, we're limited to the code violations, and whenever we get a report about those, then we address it.
I know they had a half a trailer there for about ten years with a blue top on it. So I think, you know, that was just wide open.
Yes, sir.
I know they had a problem with the water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, all it needs to be connected, it needs to be connected right. If they're going to run a trailer park or whatever they want to run out there.
Yes, sir.
It all has to be legal with the city of Biloxi.
Mm-hmm.
So as long as you on top of that, that's what you're supposed to be doing.
Yes, sir.
Your inspector is checking that area.
We do. We have a code enforcement officer that's assigned to that area, not just to the trailer park, but to that large area there, and going through there once a week is part of his requirement. And if he sees code violations, he's authorized to write them up.
Mr. Creel and Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah.
Out of respect, I would limit this to the resolution, not the whole of Baker Street. We can discuss those issues at some other time. Mr. Kohler, if you have any further questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But this resolution is, is restricted to the two parcels on Baker Street, not the whole of Baker Street.
Okay, but most of those lots are out there at the same time.
I understand.
Am I going to be allowed to divide up my lots?
If you go through the proper channels and it, it meets the codes, I'm sure Mr. Creel can help you with that.
One, one question.
Mr. Tisdale.
Mr. Creel, have there been parcels split before out there, Jerry?
So this is not the first time this has occurred over the years.
Maybe it's happened once, more than once?
More than once, yes, sir.
Okay, so that, so this is not a unique situation?
No, sir. It's happened before. It's gone through the process each time.
Okay, do, do you, I don't know that you would know what the minimum square foot is for a lot out there, what, forty foot, forty by a hundred roughly?
Forty, forty by a hundred, I believe. It has to meet a certain lot width and it has to meet a certain square footage for each lot. These two lots do.
Okay, so if Mr. Kohler had a, a large lot and wanted to split it into two, or if it was large enough into three parcels, as long as he came to speak with you about it and filled out the appropriate paperwork and complied, then there should not be a problem.
Well, once you get past two lots, then the process changes. Then you get into the public hearing requirement. But as far as splitting a lot, if he comes in and we identify his piece of property, if he meets the size requirements, we'll do the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else? Dr. Tisdale? Anybody else on the council have a question or concern? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor of Resolution A, please signal with the raise of your hand.
I may be wanting to pause.
Motion carries unanimously. Did you say?
One opposed.
Oh, you're opposed, excuse me. It's six to one. Felix Skynes is in opposition. We'll move this to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Dr. Tisdale. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kenny Glavin. Dr. Tisdale, you're first up.
Yeah, on item I, this deals with the housing incentive grants, and as we, as we agreed upon, I know Attorney Abid is, is out there, and he may want to answer some questions if any of us have questions. But the reason these, these grants and proposed awards come to us is that we, if we're comfortable with them, we approve them. We don't have to approve these sums. And in, in looking at item I, and we got a revised resolution today, this is one of the substitutes, I believe. These are twenty-four units. This is the old Josette's or the old Borden's building for George, Josette's for everybody else. Twenty-four units and an award of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, roughly ninety-three hundred dollars, ninety-three seventy-five per unit. And I, I would, I would like to see this reduced perhaps to seventy-five hundred dollars. That'd be a difference of forty-five thousand dollars, just because it frees money for more grants that may be out there, or more grant applications that may be out there. That's all. You'll notice grant awards, the first ones we did initially were twenty-five thousand. After that, we revised the ordinance so that it would be up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And generally, these grants, I think, Mr. Abid, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're typically running between five and ten thousand dollars per unit, and in this case, twenty-four units. And we, we, you know, we're trying to obviously incent this development. But also, it's a little less than half of the money that we set aside for this. So that's all. It's just to spread the money a little, a little farther. I'll offer a motion if it's appropriate. If not, let me know when the appropriate time is, Mr. President, and I'll offer a, a motion to reduce the grant from the current rate of ninety-three seventy-five to seventy-five hundred dollars per unit for each of those twenty-four units. That would change the sum from two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and eighty thousand, I think, if my math's correct. When you're ready for a motion, let me know and-
I think it's proper to make that amendment now.
Okay, I would make that motion and encourage somebody to support it with a second.
Dr. Tisdale has on the table a motion to amend item I to reflect a reduction from two hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. Is seventy-five hundred dollars per unit as opposed to the original ninety-three hundred? Do I have a second? Before we take that off the floor, Mr. Abid, if you would state your name and your position, I should have done that with Mr. Creel for those that listen to or transcribe this record. They don't have the pleasure of looking at your pretty face.
Thank you.
Would you please give us some history on this?
Peter Abid, City Attorney. This is one of several grants that have been in process, and they're now all coming before the council. You're correct. We initially allocated five hundred thousand for these incentives. The objective is to identify ideally residential with a retail component and try to, try to have, create more downtown residential. The Fritz property, that was the first sort of grant that was approved. That was two retails on the bottom with two residencies on top. The sort of second one that went through the process was the renovation of the Old Swetman Drugstore, which is next to the Mardi Gras Museum. They put probably close to eight hundred thousand dollars into that building before it was over and have two residential on top when they could have just done commercial. Then we had a, a number of individual houses, and this is correctly more of a major undertaking. This is a purchase of the old Josette's building. Not just the, the original structure is being developed, but also sort of where there's carport area, that's going to be new construction. This is going to be at least three, three million dollar project, creating forty-one sort of upscale developments in what's a key corridor. I think we're looking at down the road, maybe extending the bricks down at least towards Hancock Bank. And it's kind of in the center, right near the ballpark, and meeting with Main Street and the city, we felt this was an appropriate number, roughly ninety-three, a little over ninety-three seventy-five per unit, with understanding it's all totally up to the council, however the council wants to deal with it. If they feel it's too much, free to cut that back. I think he's just started his demo, his demo work there now. And so it was, it was a good project, we think.
I have one follow-up question. We have four other grant applications on here, item G, item H, and item J. Now, item G and item H are awarded five thousand each for the unit, and item J, and that one is ten thousand. So we have differing values throughout this process. How was that calculated and determined? Who determined, who, who receives which amount?
We kind of, it's between us and Main Street, but we look at it, there's a number of factors we look at. We look at, first of all, what is the amount of new investment and what are they putting in? And what is ability of return? Because these, these grants are going to be paid back after being administered through Main Street. They're paid back to us, to the Economic Security Fund where this money's coming. So, for example, a project where it's raw land and you're building a, a brand new building or something like the Fritz Building, the property taxes on that are pretty easy to quantify to repay the loan. And we feel like in some cases, that loan can be repaid in four to five years. Some of these where there's an existing structure and there's a lot of interior sort of renovation, and it needs it, a lot of these need it, you know, they, these houses have to be vacant for over a year before they can qualify. So these are, for the most part, dilapidated properties. But will the tax assessor really put an increase in assessment on a house that's already there when they're renovating? They're not going to probably see a huge bump in the, in the tax recovery. So that's factored in. We tend to sort of give less if there's not going to be a faster return. So we try to quantify the return. We look at what they're investing. We look at the quality of what they're doing. We look at the overall thing. If there's retail below, that's actually a plus, you know, it, so it's, and, and as the guidelines give us, it is subjective, but we, it's vetted through Main Street and vetted through this office, and we propose it to the owner, and they sometimes complain. They ask for more. We may look at it again, but these are all, have been agreed on by the owners, these amounts.
Okay.
Not a perfect system, but so far, I think it's worked very well and, and been a, a very good project. The main project of this was figuring out how to make it, get it done correctly and get it done legal. We had to get two Attorney General opinions, but this is the sort of thing that in, it sort of incentivizes.
Right, I think-
People move back. So we, we think overall, it's been working very well.
I just, I just wanted to know what the criteria was to determine the, the value.
But after this, we're going to have, if, if this, as we go through this, if these all approved, I think we still have about a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand left, so.
Mr. Barrett?
I, I just have a general question about the, the grants as well. If we award the grants and they don't complete the project, are they required to give us the money back, or?
Oh, great question. They don't get the money until they get a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
And we inspect it, and then we verify that they've actually put the money in and spent the money. So not, not, this money is just to approve the amount, but it won't be given if it's not done-
So it's given to them after the fact as a reimbursement almost, then?
Right.
Okay, that's all.
Councilman Glav- Lawrence?
I'm going to follow up with what Bobby was saying. The two new houses on Forest are brand new homes. They were empty lots. They built two brand new homes, and you only get them five thousand. You renovated a house and you give them ten thousand. I'm like, yeah, I think that's out of line. If you're going to do five thousand, five thousand. Then you did, another lady did a renovation of three apartments, and you give up five thousand each. So I don't really understand why one house gets ten thousand because they renovated. The nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the downtown, that's what you're looking for. That was the reason this thing was done. Then you have another problem. You already did twenty units. According to the resolution we passed, it was twenty units. So are we past twenty units now?
Well, the original resolution sort of thought there'd be a full twenty-five thousand for each house, and we've changed that now to up to twenty-five thousand. So that allowed for more units.
Not saying that. The resolution read ten thou, ten units. The start would then change it to twenty. So we need to go back and change the resolution to more than twenty. I don't care what you give them. You said we could only do twenty units, and the program was going to be dead. So you already did twenty units. You hadn't spent the five hundred thousand, but I'm just saying. So we either have to go back and rescind the resolution, add something to it. But you already look at the numbers you got, because right here, I mean, I disrupted right there. I knew of nineteen. So I don't know if they had any other one that slipped in there. But I mean, so you only do one more.
I'll look at that, but we haven't approved, we haven't approved twenty units yet. We haven't paid twenty units.
Twenty units, maximum twenty-five thousand maximum each. That was the five hundred thousand. I wonder where the five hundred thousand come from. If you remember the first resolution, you only had ten, and they had to go back and change that resolution to make it twenty. It was twenty times twenty-five was the five hundred thousand. But you said twenty. So now you, you're going to do more than twenty, you need to change that. I mean, a guy doing that at Josette's, that's what you're looking at, about ten units downtown.
I know the original, the original resolution said the grant was twenty-five thousand on the original, and then-
Per grant. This is one grant for two hundred and twenty-five thousand is what we're talking about.
Right. Saying that.
What you're saying is the original resolution needs to be looked at-
I think that's fine. I got no problem with that.
He just wants to make sure that the, I think what he's stating is that the total quantity of units that we could grant was twenty.
I think the to-
So if we exceed the total number of units that can be, receive granted money, we just need to change that.
What my understanding, excuse me, I didn't mean to jump in, but I really know the whole about twenty, if it were twenty-five thousand a unit, twenty times twenty-five is half a million dollars, and that's what the, that's where you got confused.
That was the first one.
Right. I thought it was a dollar amount. I thought the cap was a dollar amount. If it was fi, half a million dollars we're going to set aside, and if it were twenty units, that would be twenty-five thousand each, and that's, that's where you got the arithmetic, five hundred thousand. This is, this is one, one grant for two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We understand that, that portion, and I'm not, I'm just saying what he's saying is the resolution, if it said twenty units, just change the number, just amend that. That's all he's suggesting.
I think-
We spent a lot of time talking about something that-
What he's saying, when we changed the resolution to say up to twenty-five, did we change the number of units?
No, we did not.
Correct.
Okay, we can check that.
It was twenty. Now, I'm going to care if you give ten or five, that's fine, you know, I got no problem with that. We need to go back and make sure our resolution's correct. That's the other thing. Another problem you have, the more you do these things, it's going to cost us five hundred thousand dollars to collect this five hundred thousand. Because you got to pay a CPA to do it. Main Street hired one. We have to have lawyers to do it, to make sure we collect this money.
But Main Street has a CPA.
So all of a sudden, at twenty-five thousand, you're trying to collect back, going to cost you fifty thousand. It's going to cost you twenty-five thousand, collect it over ten years. And the only thing we're going to do is for nothing. I know Main Street had to hire that CPA room, a group to handle that. So the expenses of collecting this money back is going to be huge.
So what we have on the table right now is a, a motion to amend the amount in I from two hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and eighty. Dr. Tisdale is seeking a second. Does he have one? There being no second, Dr. Tisdale, it fails. Any other items for discussion?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
And, and all these people, y'all talked today, accepted what you give them.
Sorry.
I know a lot of ten thousand would accept it, that's the most, but the people with the two new houses, the five thousand, they was happy with that?
Yes. And, and the one you talked about on Forest where they only got a lower amount, those were houses that they purchased through the, that were moved off of division. So they already got the benefit of getting a house for basically twenty-five hundred dollars. So it would have been, I didn't think it'd be proper on our part that they get a house for twenty-five hundred dollars and then we give them twenty-five thousand for a housing grant.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that, I was just wondering, they accepted the five thousand. I know they both elevated.
Yeah, none of these are on unless they've accepted, and they've agreed and want to proceed through, so.
I'm sorry, Councilman Lawrence, I thought you seconded that, and I misremembered, it's actually Councilman Glavin that seconded the consent agenda. It's Councilman Glavin, do you have any?
That's, that's okay, Italians close to Croatian anyway, but, uh, but anyway, I, I just want to stay on this housing, uh, grant and everything. Uh, you know, I think our job is to, you know, uh, increase economic development, I think this is a good grant program. Uh, we should be doing everything we can to repopulate our, uh, downtown area, I think this achieves that. Uh, the developers are very reputable, the Fritz Company developer and others, um, that are interested in doing this, we should open those doors for them to develop and, and, um, you know, we should be a little bit flexible because each unit may not be a cookie cutter unit, and so we got to figure that piece out, and I guess that's what we're trying to do through, throughout this process. So, um, you know, we got a limit, an overall limit on, on the, uh, the amount of money that is available for this grant program, and we'll keep assessing how it's working, and hopefully we'll get people populating the city, spending money, and, and, uh, we'll, yes, it, it'll cost us in those taxes, you're correct, uh, Councilman Lawrence, but the overall goal, I think, is to re-energize and repopulate our, our city center. So I'll certainly support.
Do you have any other items on the consent agenda you'd like to discuss?
Uh, yeah, I was looking at, we're re-upping the, the lease with Riverboat, uh, Corporation. Can you just kind of give a, a quick summary on that, if you don't mind?
Which one's that?
The, the lease on the Riverboat, uh, Corporation.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Do we have a, for the record, what number or letter? Q?
Q.
Correct. Uh, this is, uh, a refinancing that the, uh, Riverboat Corporation, also known as Golden Nugget, is going through, where, uh, I think the lender is actually one of Mr., uh, Fertitta's, um, one of his other private companies that's loaning money to the Nugget, so they needed a, another one of these consents to the existing lien holder. And, um, it's essentially joined into by the Secretary of State and us, because we're the landlords for the building.
Any CPI built into it, or anything like that?
We reserve that, that's sort of inside the, um.
Inside.
Any rent disputes or anything are still, uh, being reserved. I think April has been paid and, uh, we expect to be fully caught up, you know, after this is done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
No other questions?
Councilman Gines, do you have any questions on the consent agenda?
No, the only thing, um, just clarify something that Mr. Barrett said, uh, correct me, Mr. Creel, um, when we distribute the, um, the funding, the, the grant funding, they have to have a certificate of occupancy, right?
That's what, that's what triggers the consideration for funding after the council is completed, is they get a CO, and it goes back to, um, Mr. Aby, and the department starts taking.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, actually, the Sapphire, which is next door to the Mardi Gras Museum, that one, they've just received their certificate of occupancy, so, uh, their grant has been approved for some time. They've now completed it, and now the payment of the money will come before y'all in the next week or so. So we actually have two, it comes before you twice. First to approve it, and then to verify that everything has been accomplished and to pay the money.
Right, thanks.
Would that be all?
That concludes.
Councilman Barrett?
Uh, on AA, the Point Cadet traffic study, is that the exit ramp connecting to Howard? Okay, that's, that's all I have on that one. And then on the Wool Market City Center, I know that we're pretty much finished on that, um, outside of a, um, pavilion or a, a cover or something like that. Do you know when we will be able to, um, what, what are we looking at as far as opening up on that? I know that that's on PP.
My note tells me work is complete at the city center, with the exception of the awning, which the developer has on back order until the end of, it'll come in somewhere around the end of May. We've, we've stopped their time, and a punch list is being developed, and we do, we do need to, uh, overlay the parking lot.
Parking lot and some improvements.
Now, didn't we have an agreement with the county on the parking lot?
The county's good, the landscaping, as well as the improvement, the extension of the park lots coming from the county.
I'll, I'll regenerate the MOU that everybody signed and send it, uh, to Con- Connie.
Okay.
So that she's, and then we'll have a little conversation about getting finished.
Okay, and then one last thing, I know we have a lot of, um, on this email with all the, um, awarding of titans and all that with MDEQ and DMR. I did talk to, uh, several people, and we're going to be good on that, uh, two fifty again on that Eagle Point Park, that's, that is a go. I actually just got confirmation just a few minutes ago, so.
Excellent.
That's a go.
We'll get that basketball court now.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett, Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Lawrence, do you have any questions on the consent agenda?
Yeah, Chief, you did a wicked job on this C, when you got the hundred percent money. The next one, you slipped fifty-fifty, what happened to you? That wasn't too good, they would did a hundred percent, then it would go fifty-fifty. I know, but you said it would beat it, I was just, I was just kidding you on that. Uh, on the Coon Street thing, this is just putting a project in place, period.
Yeah.
There'll be no design yet, and are we looking at doing just one added ramp?
Thirty percent design, I think, on, no, that was the boardwalk, thirty percent.
Right, no, that's, that's, that's what the former mayor is, is, we, we set up the project, we, uh, we put a little bit of money in the project, which you saw where it came from, from another project that had closed out. And then, uh, and then we do, we pay, in this case, Pickering is the A and E firm, will do a thirty percent design, which these projects compete so much better for Go Mesa money, if they go up there looking like we're actually going to get, got some skin in the game, and they're going to get done soon, and not just a, a drain, a dream. So that, that, that makes them compete better. And, um, I can't really answer your question about one, one or two, you know, we, we prefer to have two additional boat, boat ramps, we'll have to see what fits.
No, it's going to be, it's going to be six total, uh, boats.
I'm not, I'll tell you right now, I'm not supporting two. You got one there, I had one more, it's great.
It's going to be a total of three, what's in the design.
Yeah, and I, I, I can't support that, so you get, you get the money, do what you want to do, but I'm not going to support that. Now, I'm still looking at.
Tell me what you're not going to support, well, the, the.
I'm not supporting three ramps, yeah.
Okay, why?
Why?
Yeah, why?
You're totally destroying a complex that's been there and run three bit, wait a minute, you got three businesses, they, they rent two boats out of there, they rent the harbor.
This, this is not.
Yeah, wait a minute, if you run three, you're going to destroy all that property. And then they have a lease for that piece of property, have y'all talked to them about the lease?
Yeah, we've, we've been all meeting about the whole thing, the whole concept, with every, with all, all parties involved. So, you know, you come, we'll review that with you, and, you know, you bring whoever else you want to. I mean, the whole idea of unbeat DMR and, and all these other things, we need to, we got one boat right now, one boat ramp. The other day, uh, well, actually two, with the, the small craft harbor. This is going to be, put more folks in order, just go, especially during the, uh, uh, you know, the pandemic, and, uh, these things, they had thirty-something, uh, trailers down there. The whole idea is to provide more access to the world. Seventy-six hundred boats registered in Harrison County. You got to put them over somewhere. We got complete support from the DMR, and, uh, you know, Richard, uh, uh, Galot, with, you know, we've been day one wi- with this. So, I mean, it, I think you're, respectfully, you know, you got to understand the whole picture, it's not going to destroy anything, it's going to add things to it, big time.
It's going to take away.
No, it's not.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's just, uh, different opinions on that.
I don't want to take my shoe off, but you know.
Yeah, I'm going to catch you, I'm going to throw it right back.
Okay.
But I'm just telling you, that's.
All right.
That one, because you keep saying about the boardwalk, you keep saying about what you're planning on doing, but I've never seen any actual, anything you've done with anything.
We'll show it to you.
So, I mean, and it's, you go get the money, that's fine, but I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can handle some of these things, you know. And to me, some of the stuff, I, I don't like what you're doing with some of it, but that's, you're the mayor, and I have the right to vote against it, so I'll do that. I'll prove the reason, I'm going to do it. So, that's on, that's on Coon Street. That's all I want to find about that. And I, so, I, I see this one here, that we got the quitclaim deed for the bridge that we already owned and we already maintained, right? So what is this, just official?
In case we get, in case we find.
I mean, we've been doing that forever.
A hundred million dollars, we can build some bridges there.
We've always maintained it, right?
Well, Peter, tell us the situation on the bridge, we own the bridge, don't we? To our Pops Ferry Bridge.
Right.
About the traffic studies?
Yeah, traffic studies.
Right, yeah, just FYI on the traffic studies, we, we had to split that into two separate projects because we got two separate grants. One for the Atkinson Road, and, and everybody's aware of why we're doing Atkinson Road, uh, traffic study, because of the Vitucci development. And then the other, second one was the, uh, Point Cadet traffic study, and we're doing that because we have on the books, on the, on the planning table, a potential convention center, a potential, uh, gaming area, uh, and, um, and in Margaritaville for sure. Uh, so a whole lot of new development either scheduled or planned for, and we don't know, we need to know what the impact is on, on those roadways as you come off the bridge, and, and what that's going to do to us. Right now, we, we, we don't know what, what those developments are going to cause us, so that's what the traffic study's all about. And it, it'll, it's, it's mostly funded, was, the grant is mostly funded by, uh, Gulf Regional Planning, and we, we just put a small donation into, to like eighty, twenty, so, and, and they'll, they'll get started and do the work, and, um, then we'll get a, a report on what, what the traffic count's going to be after those things are, are potentially built, and what that's going to do to, uh, the down, that, that area. A prudent thing for us to do bef- before we, uh, move. It'll also tell us if that, uh, the mayor's favorite project of the exit off the bridge onto Howard Avenue is needed.
That was my question, I think it's great that we're doing it, because that's something I've been pushing for the last fifteen years. You need a way to get to Howard Avenue straight from the bridge. You, I mean, we don't have Highway ninety, you know, you have to have another, so what do you have, have any traffic studies, or how many calls you need to do to push that, where they'll be willing to come off the bridge and make an exit at, um, Howard Avenue? Have you talked to anybody, what would you need?
We've talked to a lot of folks, and Gulf Regional is the one who, who's seen this as part of their whole, their whole strategy, or strategery, whatever you want to say, that's a joke.
Strategery. Strategery. So, but, but a study, instead of talking about it, we're going to do a traffic study, so we have some facts.
That's it.
That's good, I'm, I'm, I'm all for that. Now, you, you're right on point, Fofo.
Thank you very much.
That's a good one.
Coming for you, that's indeed a point.
The only thing I have on, with regard to this, is the quitclaim deed from Harrison County to Biloxi for the Pops Ferry Bridge. What does that entail with regard to cost, maintenance requirements moving forward?
We've actually been maintaining it for at least the last twenty years. There, there was a, um, there's prior resolutions where once the bridge became, uh, taken over by the city or annexed by the city, they basically turned over all maintenance and responsibility to us. Uh, this sort of came out when we were looking at the property or the arrangements we have each other, the reciprocal arrangements, and they stated that, uh, the bridge is, uh, their property and their jurisdiction and, and all this other. And then when we said, well, if it's partly your property, why, why are y'all not paying for anything? And they said, then they produced, uh, well, here's the documents where we turned over all responsibility to you and, and the AG's opinion that does that. So we're like, well, um, the agreements that were done back then were very, you could read them both ways. It said they turned over the property to us, and the, and they, they all expired like within four years. So it was cleaner just to say, if you, you don't want to do any maintenance, you're not doing any maintenance now, give us a quitclaim to all the runways, all the approachments, give us the title to the bridge and all the approaches. So when we go forward and we're trying to get funding for this new bridge, that we, we have the title document. That was the other thing, we're trying to find out, where's our title document for the bridge? And it used to be in the county, you know, uh, the county actually built the bridge and, and then turned it over to us with a bond, so.
Is the bridge insured?
Probably, I'm sure, yeah.
Who pays that?
I'm sure the city does.
Okay. I have no further questions on the consent agenda. All in favor? The consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move to the code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel, if you would. Present item A to us.
The first case on the agenda is Joe A. Ezell, sixteen forty-four Hollywood Boulevard. This property is still in violation.
And the code case is just for the trash and litter and the shed.
Still in violation.
There was like a mountain range, that's what threw me off, I don't know what that was. I was like, where is that, where's that in Biloxi, because I haven't seen that. Okay.
That little building, is that a smoke or a beehive? What is that?
It's fallen down. I actually had a conversation with Ms. Ezell several months ago, and she promised to fix it, and she just didn't do it. They did cut the grass back then, but it's grown back up again, so.
Is there a Joe A. Ezell or anyone here to speak on behalf of sixteen forty-four Hollywood Boulevard? There being none, this hearing is closed. Mr. Creel, if you would, present item B.
Item B, Kong Than Tran, three ninety Howard Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of three ninety Howard Avenue, or is Kong Tran, Kong Fan Tran present? There being no one here to speak on behalf of three ninety Howard Avenue, this hearing is closed. There were no exceptions on the consent agenda. Did I overlook any exceptions on the consent agenda? I did not. Thank you, Lucy. Routine agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I've read a motion by Paul Tisdale, seconded by Felix Gines. Paul, discussion?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman Gines, discussion? Is there any discussion by any other member of the board?
Uh, I, I do have one question, uh, Mr. Demme, that is, we've not seen a docket this council meeting or the last one, I'm assuming it's going to be next week. Will it be one docket a month for a couple of months thereafter, or?
Right, that's what I figured.
Right, so there may be future meetings with no dockets, and we, okay, thank you.
Well, I believe, uh, Councilman Lawrence is requesting an update from you.
Come up and give us some good news.
And if you would, state your name and your position.
So, last week, we received one point nine-nine million from MEMA, uh, on Tuesday, and, uh, that puts us, uh, pretty well in good shape for a while with, uh, reimbursements from them, so we're in good shape.
Mr. Rhodey, would you state your name and your title?
Walter A. Rhodey, City of Biloxi Infrastructure Program Manager.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the routine agenda? Do I have a motion? I have a motion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, do I have a motion to recess?
So move.
Motion by Paul Tisdale, seconded by George Lawrence, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, we are in recess.